It is so clock and this meeting will come to order. For all call, all four of our trustees are here. Our treasurer was going to make it, he had pretty extreme circumstances and I couldn't make it. Attorney may be participating later, upon a good discussion. And. So. Just on our agenda is discussion of library board trustees vacancy and appointment. Board appoint someone to fulfill the vacancy and that person is trustee in the next phase, CLN trustee election winner. This born in June of 2025. There's additional information. Where would that be?
I'm sorry, yeah, the agendas are right there with the information.
Yeah, so there's agendas and information on the election or the appointment. To fulfill the vacancy there. All right, so trustee Robinson.
I just want to say that I rewatched the meeting from. I guess the 24th on Monday and. I I assume this process is going to go forward, but. There were three trustees that were very against it happening today. And I kind of thought that's that's why I rewatched it. I don't know, I, there were three out of the four trustees that really thought this was being rushed. And yet here we are. I have some personal things going on in my life this week. Somebody's in the hospital, but. I didn't get a good chance to really reach out to people that. People that I was interested in having come here or people that reached out to us even. But when I rewatched it, I just thought three out of four were very. Very much questioning why it's being so rushed. And so I stand again and ask, why is it being so rushed?
And I'm glad that you watched it because I was under the impression that at first you were saying, no, let's, let's not do it this week. And then that kind of evolved over the course of the discussion until I believe that. Most of us or even all of us had said, yeah, let's go ahead and do it. So we can, we can vote whether to proceed. Because, you know, I want to be direct. Okay, so then trustee plus.
I was just going to say, I was one of the three at the beginning, thinking we weren't even, wouldn't even be considering it. And so I did say that later, I know I said, well, let's try it, maybe we can do it. But I know I said that.
Okay, but so I would like to proceed, it sounds like you would like to proceed, because I would not like to proceed and trustee having.
Proceed, yes.
Okay, so we have three out of four who would like to proceed. So now nominations during merger fulfilling the trustee vacancy. That's just plus.
I would like to nominate Ron Hartman. He's been active politically, he's run for several offices. He's had a full career, he's retired, he's been in management at. Ford and Caterpillar and, you know, he's had, obviously had upper management that thinks he's done well. And. I think he'd be great.
Okay, it's. Alan.
And I have a prepared statement beginning here and then if it's appropriate, I don't know when I can weigh in on it. My understanding is there's two candidates at this point.
Yeah, so right now we're just, we're nominating and then after once nominated, we'll have them speak and then we'll ask the questions and then. After that, we would discuss and vote.
I would like to nominate Karen Campbell for the vacancy trustee.
Okay, and. Person, well, I was a little bit slow and the person that I was going to nominate was stolen. As long as we get a good trustee in. Okay, so there are no further nominations. Okay, hearing none, nominations are closed and our nominees are Ron Hartman and Karen Campbell. They now have up to three minutes each to tell us why they'd like to be a CLN trustee. Anyway, we will start with the first one nominated, which is Ron Hartman's.
You probably had this. That's just thinking out your. Honestly, it's. Got fingers. Oh, and thank you for this opportunity, Michelle, Tom. Tim and Vanessa, thank you, my name is Ross Hartman. I'll try to be brief, education, my professional work experience, my political activity in the county. Reasons why I'd like to join your team. Education wise, I've got a bachelor of science in industrial engineering from the University of Missouri. I've also got a master's in business administration from the University of Missouri. While at the University of Missouri, my senior year, I was president of one of the engineering societies. I was also one of the chairman of engineers week, which allowed us to go down to the governor's office. In Saint Jefferson City, also to visit the mayors of Kansas City and St. Louis and their offices. While in my master's program, I was president of the Business Fraternity Freshman Class. Work experience, I've got 45 years in corporate America. Thirty-two at Ford Motor, 11 at Caterpillar and two of us finishing up my education at John Deere. While at Ford, one of the programs, I was lead product planner on the first electric vehicle Ford was doing. Back in the early 1980s when California, at that time, tried to pass a law that 2% of your sales had to be zero emissions. We brought in a team of engineers also from Lockheed, there were 32 of them. I had to put the entire package together, the program of over $100 million and sell it to the board of directors so that we could fund the program. One of the other ones after that, I was moved over to corporate staff and quality. And was told by the director over all the development that we needed a common metrics for all our proving grounds. We had proving grounds in Michigan, Arizona, Laml, Belgium, Hiroshima, Japan and down in. Argentina, Argentina or Australia and Argentina. I led a team of supervisors from all of those different proving grounds to develop so that we had common metrics. Each proving ground was measuring the, our product with different metrics. So even though sometimes we'd have the same products or powertrains facility, we couldn't compare the tests from different, from different ones. From that, I moved on to be powertrain supervisor over three assembly plants for Ranger residing out in. Edison, New Jersey, and from there then moved to be the powertrain engineer over a joint product development for 650, 750 trucks with Navistar out in Mexico. Then moving on to Caterpillar, I was assigned to go to Croatia to work with our lead supplier there. Because we weren't meeting production at our Dortmund, Germany plant.
Okay, finish up, please, that's your three minutes.
There's only two of us.
That's fair.
I mean, really.
I don't know, to be on the board, you got to follow certain.
Okay, do you guys want to give them an extra minute or?
One minute.
Two, I don't care.
Thank you.
And then one or two, so I can click the sign.
One.
One, okay.
All right, Coopney County, I ran for North Idaho College Board of Trustees, I was vetted and recommended by the KCRCC and had a score of over 90. Also ran for Worley Highway District Commissioner, was vetted and recommended by the KCRCC with a score of over 90. Member of the Coopney Stability and Resilience Group, I'm the deputy of the Engineering and Energy Team. I'm vice president of the Coopney Catholic Conservatives. I've got, I'm a fourth degree knight in the Knights of Columbus. While campaigning for North Idaho College Trustee in Worley, when I have spoke in front of the Candle, at Candlelight Church, Alder Church. Republican Women, Reagan Republicans, Pachyderms, John Birch Society, town halls and radio interviews on Hello Idaho Speaks. Why I would like to be one of the library trustee, I believe in support the policy changes you are trying to do to.
Yeah, yeah, finish your sentence.
I support the policy changes you are doing to keep pornography away from children, support dropping the American Library Association. Support dropping the IC RMP, Idaho Governor Insurance. Support efforts to keep the library budget under control and not raising property taxes and be a voice. Other people in the county, which I think I've got a good idea with what.
Okay, maybe that was a long run on then.
Head my second door.
All right, so actually I thought that we would listen to all of them.
Are we going to increase in time for the other candidates to do fair increase?
Okay, so our next nominee is Karen Campbell and you have preferably three minutes, but I guess.
Were you counting the time that he was handing out? Did you start the timer?
Sure.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, are you ready?
I am ready. It's been such an honor to be nominated, so I'm so glad to be here, Chair Otten and Vice Chair Henley. Trustee Bass and trustee Robinson, thank you so much. First of all, I just want to share my heart of why I had to go into full vacancy as library trustee. And I've always had a great, great love for the library. As a child, I enjoyed so much going to the library and just checking out books that would. Satisfy the desires of my heart. I, and as an adult, it was also a place for me to go to rest where I could just sit there and enjoy a book and enjoy. A place of quietness, a place of peace and safety. And so library has always been a joy for me. In fact, I just realized that I did, I thought if I, if ever I wanted to work again, because I am retired. I would love to work in the library and I even applied for the Hayden Library about a year ago. And at that time, they did not have the funds to go ahead and hire anybody at that time. But my goal to be a trustee is to protect our children. I am concerned about any harmful information. That would be accessible to our children and so, and what I mean by harmful, I mean like explicit sexual contact. And so I would want to make sure that there was a protection there. And I'm an avid reader myself, I just, I love it. I even taught my children to read before they even entered kindergarten. And so that's how important the library and reading is to me. When I talk about harmful information, I'm not talking about banning books at all. I'm just, and this, again, this is for children, I would just want to place them in a position that they were not easily accessible to the children. And an example I could give is like when we were renting out movies, there was an X-rated section. And children could not rent movies in that section unless you weren't adults. So it was kind of like the same thing for me in that respect. As far as who I am, the Lord Jesus Christ is my personal Savior. And my education was education, I was wanting to be a teacher. I completed three years, but then needed to, I got married after my sophomore year and then started having children. So I didn't complete my degree, but my love is for the children to educate. I start and also. What I feel like I would bring to the table is I did have a job in the bank. I started out at the teller and ended up as a loan officer, so I'm very appreciative of. To budget, to make sure there is a budget, that your account is balanced and that you are staying in the black. And so that's important to me and I feel like I would have the techniques to make sure that that would come about. I'm retired from Southwest Airlines as a flight attendant. And I feel what I've learned as a flight attendant is when you're working together as trustees, it's important to, to be able to work with each other. And as a flight attendant, we needed to be a team with the pilots forever, any kind of irregular operations or emergencies. If you were not a team and on the same page, it was chaos and it was not safe for passengers. Also to be. Detail oriented regarding the FAA rules and regulations and so I feel like I have that detailed mind as far as the. The codes or the statutes that would be applied to the library. And, and then just through customer service, too, there with any escalating information.
About three minutes or four minutes?
That's four.
Okay.
Okay, so if there was any escalating circumstances, we were trained to diffuse that for the welfare of. The environment. So anyway, so I believe that that's what I can bring forward is just my love for the library. To protect the children, be an attendant to the statutes and making decisions concerning the budget. And again, thank you so much. It's truly an honor to be here and up with you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So now we will have questions for candidates, you can ask them both the same question or ask just one. Assistant Director.
I have one question for Mr. Hartman. What is your favorite library memory?
I don't know if I could, people out of one, I spent biggest share of time in the library and I was trying to finish my degrees in engineering and MBA. And. University of Missouri has a very large, like the oldest university in western Mississippi. And I would sit back in the areas where all the books were stored. And open a window and study back in that area. So it would probably be. While studying the, after my final stuff, University of Missouri, like.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Robinson.
Well, first I was going to ask if we are, if they're still sitting in the audience, we're just asking them like this, is that fine?
Outstanding.
No, that, it's fine, if that's, it's fine with me, okay. Okay, so, so my first question is to Mr. Hartman also, it's similar, but what does the library mean to you? What's the role and who does it serve?
Do it in order, it serves the public. It's there to provide educational materials for people from childhood through adulthood. And be a source of reference for information, also provide computers for people that might not have computer. And is. An important resource that's provided by the property tax of people that come.
Yeah.
I think they should come up since it's recorded.
That's probably a good idea. So one at a time or both? This chair, you guys both want to sit there so that it's going through there. Yeah, right. Okay, so. As chair, I want to make sure that you guys live in the CLN service area and they call the elections office and that there are parts of Shoshone County. I think either of you live in.
No.
So it confirmed with them what they said was that anyone who votes for a city council other than Corleone City Council is within our service area. Sorry, you all, you're nodding, but.
I'm not in Salem, it's Corleone.
Okay.
No.
And.
No, I've lived in Hayden for nine years, I mean Hayden, I'm sorry, okay, nine years.
County.
Right? I have another question, but I'll. Just plus.
So for Karen, can you tell me about any time in your career or past where you've. Had to work with someone to get them to come forward and actually tell the truth or. Explain when they did, when they were trying to not reveal what they knew.
You mean. Deescalate a situation?
Well, maybe not de-escalate, but just where someone says, I don't know, but you know, they probably do know. Is there some, is there some example you give me of how you worked with them to get them to say something and how you did it?
Absolutely, so it was, I was working a flight, I was going to Orange County, I just remember where we were going. And I was getting ready to go up and do the demo. And at that time, you could not have your phones on and so we were policing passengers that were texting or whatever while we were already. Headed to take off and we were taxiing and so. I went to the demo, came back and I saw him and I said, sir, we really need you to go ahead and turn off your phone at this time. And he just didn't answer and so I was busy now getting the oxygen mask, you know, and I went up as I'm going up to the, the middle of the aircraft, he was still texting. And I said, sir, you know, I've, I've already told you, I please, please, we need you to turn off your phone. You know, it's, it's FAA ruling for you to have that off right now. Didn't respond and so when I came back after doing the oxygen demo, he was still texting. And so I just looked at him and I said, you know, I've told you three times now. That this is rules and regulations that you need to be off your phone, please turn it off or put it in airplane mode. And. He still didn't comply and I said, sir, do I need to talk to the captain about this? And he looked at me and he goes, well, if you feel fit to do so. And I said, okay, I will. And so that's what I did, I went to the back of the, the galley there and called the captain. And, you know, when flight attendants are in charge of the passengers, the pilot's job is to get you from A to B safely. Anything that goes on in the cabin is the flight attendant's responsibility. And so he asked me, he said, you know, and I explained to him that the passenger wasn't willing to comply. And so he asked me, do you want him off this aircraft? I guess I do. And so turned around, went back to the gate and he got taken off. But, you know, so there are things where you have to say, this is the rule and regulation and if you're not willing to abide by it or comply, this is. You know. And then there were other, there was many other issues.
It's fine, thank you.
Assistant Director.
This question's from Ms. Campbell, you mentioned that books speak to your heart. And so what are your thoughts about books that speak to someone's heart that might be something you disagree with?
So I don't, I don't have any problem with something that I may disagree with. My concern is anything that would be harmful and I'm talking about children who are, who have not developed maturity wise yet. To be able to make a decision for themselves, what is beneficial for them and what is not beneficial. And so just like a parent is for your children, you as the parent would decide, you know, that's, that's not good to be near the stove, you know, touching a hot pan or anything. And so that's definitely my concern is. Determining what is harmful. To the child and putting. Policies in place to protect them from that. So it's not a matter of whether I agree with it or not, it was whether it's harmful.
So. Trustee involved. Trustee involvement is estimated at 10 hours per month and a lot more than that lately. So during budget season and other thought issues, it's going to be more than 10 hours. So do each of you have time to devote to this?
Yes.
I'm retired. Got no.
Just plus.
So, Mr. Hartman, can you. Explain maybe in your experience on your political activities or is there been times where. You've been put on the spot and had to. Basically on the spot, decide your position. Sir, examples or maybe you hadn't even thought of, thought of the condition that you were going to be in, but. How did you use your principles to answer your position, I guess?
When it comes to my right way, it was right after the election for North Idaho College Trustee. And I was just attending one of the meetings. And it was a meeting that was totally out of control where the fire alarm pulled. And we had to evacuate the building. And the meeting was just broke down several times in chaos. And so. We had to leave and I walked outside the student union. And I already lost. And I was surrounded by people in my face, cameras like this, cell phones, screaming and yelling. I go, what do you want from me? I lost. Not one of the trustees. And so. When you're totally surrounded and they're yelling and screaming at you. I, I, you know, you got to keep your composure and not let it get out of hand. Because I also knew the newspaper was there, they also knew who I was. And I've had to deal with that here. And it's unfortunate that people behave that way, but I've come to expect it and you just got to roll, roll with it, keep your composure.
Trustee, honey.
I don't have a particular question for either one of the nominees. And the reason I'm speaking is like, you know, while I'm asking questions, I did speak with both nominees on the phone. Let's say it then for at least 30 minutes apiece, I reviewed the documents both nominees have provided. So I don't have questions, but it feels if I have a fairly good feel for both candidates, neither of whom I know personally. Maybe I've run into them maybe, but I don't know them closely, just think that clear.
Okay. They can certainly learn Robert's rules while you're on the board. But I'm just wondering if either one of you had experience on a board?
I did serve as the commissioner for Hayden Arts Commission. For several years and was vice chair, so yes, I am familiar with Robert's rules of court.
I have not served on a board publicly, I've been in management, supervised people at Ford and Caterpillar. And had to, I give presentations to the executive board of directors at Ford Motor on a six-week basis. But on a public board.
Further questions? Okay, hearing them, I guess you guys can go to your seats and.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, we appreciate it. Appreciate you being willing to be put on the spot because if you're on the board, you're going to be on the spot a lot. Great, so now we will discuss the candidates and hopefully we'll be very civil and not personal. Trustee, Anna.
I'm just for transparency and so forth here. I have contacted, have been in contact with eight persons to be considered for this open trustee position. One person I expected to get contact from, or hear a phone call from. Didn't call me, but they're solely responsible for raising public awareness to the local library issues and particularly advocating for the protection of the community's children. And that's the reason why I campaigned and I was elected as trustee. So I'd probably publicly like to acknowledge and thank Marianna Cochran for that. Secondly, a number of prospective appointees, they're desiring consideration. Have been openly hostile to this more conservative board throughout my first year in office. And they, even though we're doing our best to ensure taxpayer funds not used to procure or make available pornography to the children's and, uh, the children in the community. And so those aspiring trustees were cast aside by me, were not worthy of being, giving them any serious consideration. So I'll jump to Ron Hartman here and put a few, I'll say positive points for both candidates from what I saw. And I didn't put any negatively in person because we're in public forum and I don't think I have any particular negative thing to say about either, either. we're in public forum and I don't think I have any particular negative thing to say about either, either nominee. Um, for Ron Hartman, um, we only asked for a one-page document. And I'll say in, in a good way, it showed his interest in qualifications there. And he certainly provided us with plenty of material to work with. His, um, professional resume was impressive, I gotta say. And I didn't look at that. I didn't want to teep my thinking on it till last night. I think it was about eight or nine o'clock last night. I wasn't putting it off. I just wanted to see what I had to think here. Uh, he's been very involved in local politics for nearly four years, including running for several offices. He's been a supervisor and a manager throughout most of his professional life. He was to potentially become a good, um, sorry. Oh, he will potentially become his second engineer to fill a seat on the board here. And having walked, uh, in as an other precinct prior to the elections, uh, he's like likely to have a pretty good feel for what the community has in mind out there. He's knocked on quite a few doors. Uh, going over to Karen Campbell, uh, she contacted me last week and very enthusiastically expressed her desire to be appointed to the board. Um, she expressed, uh, her vested interest in protecting local grandchildren. She has grandchildren in the area. Uh, she's want to be protected from harmful material in CLN's libraries. She expressed she's a book lover and avid reader and a user of the library. And she would unabashedly bring additional strong Christian values to the board by value. Uh, and with a background which ranged from banking to a lengthy period working as a flight attendant, I think she brings some welcome or could soft skills and people's skills and some de-escalation experience to an arena which has been fraught with public friction. And it appears she's a fiscal, fiscal conservative. And given her education, which was interrupted by a vocation of marriage and family, she demonstrated a commitment to children by initially becoming a teacher. And so I would say regarding both nominees, they both indicate they have sufficient time to devote to the board. That was a good question. That's why I didn't have to ask it. I wasn't asked that question. And I've learned that the, um, myself, that the trustee job can demand considerably more time than I had originally thought. So both nominees appear to have the time. That's my general picture of both nominees.
Thanks. Just pause.
Well, I didn't prepare a statement, but I will say that I over the last week and a half, or I'm not sure how long it was, but I started going through the list. I looked at my phone contacts, but other people that I knew that had been in maybe would know good candidates. And I spoke or corresponded with at least 10 people trying to figure out who might be good, who has shown strong support of the policies we're trying to, we've been trying to work on for the, uh, separating obscene material and putting it in for minors and putting it into the adult section. And I was, was looking for who would be good on the board that has, that, that wouldn't waffle on things like that. I talked with the, with people that had been vetted from the central committee. That, that includes a background check, uh, criminal background check and so forth. Anyway, I concluded after, and, and, and a couple of them actually backed out on me after talking with them. So I concluded that Ron was the best candidate I could bring forward. And I feel, you know, his, his, his background being checked out thoroughly, uh, is, is a really, uh, strong position. Um, Karen, I did not talk with, I was going to do that. Um, I didn't talk with, but I, I do read what you've said and I've listened to what you've answered. Um, I know we, we raised 10 children and we're grandparents now. And so I, I hear you saying that you're worried about your grandchildren and about, uh, you know, the kids in the county. So I think you've got what it takes too, just because you got that part. Um, so that's kind of the way I see it right now.
Assistant.
Um, I would like to thank, um, all the people that did send emails to us, um, interested in the position. Uh, whether you were contacted or not, uh, it was heard that you, you reached out. So, uh, I'm sure we all appreciate that. I did actually reach out to a, a person, but I didn't hear back for whatever reason. Um, it, uh, like I said earlier, it's, I think this is being a little bit rushed, but, um, I think, um, this position needs to be held by, um, and I, I can't quote exactly, but part of a trustee's role is to advocate for the library. Um, I am a big believer that you advocate for the library and the community, but advocating for the library is the number one. Um, and I, I think that, uh, Ms. Campbell definitely has, um, I saw that in her presentation that she is here, um, because she loves libraries, she has a passion with libraries. And, um, and of course, Mr. Hartman, I appreciate, uh, your presentation as well, but as an advocate for the library and, and considering the, the existing board right now, I'm definitely, um, uh, looking to have, uh, Ms. Campbell as our, our new trustee, just because of the aspect of love for library and understanding of library. Thank you both, though, for coming in.
Uh, yeah, we have, uh, two really excellent candidates. I, I've talked to 10 to 15 different people and it was super hard to narrow it down. Anyway, and so I want to thank everyone who participated, everyone that all of us talked to and who were willing to, to give their time and the people who wrote in willing to give their time. So we love a trustee who loves books, education, the libraries, community experience on the governmental board and desires peaceful and meaningful discussion and decisions on the board. Being to help heal, uh, the uh, the contention that we've had with the community and, and here. So I, I'm also thanking Karen Campbell. So there's, go ahead, trustee Anna.
I was going to say, I struggled over this a long time. I, I knew, I knew the two names were in the, in the hat there, the two people, the two contenders or people that were being proposed. And I had a very difficult time. I struggled because both have very strong qualifications and different types of qualifications. And I didn't find it easy. Um, so my decision was very, very carefully thought out and, and I would be happy to be honest with you that I could live with either person as a trustee here. So whoever doesn't get in there shouldn't feel slighted in my opinion because I'm, I'm just trying to get a good fit for the job. I think both people are fully qualified. I can be happy with either person.
Okay. Anything else? Trese Robinson? Okay, um, so I'm sorry that you feel that we're rushing it. I'm thinking it would be really good to have someone on board, especially for this budget discussion with the pack in front of them and going through it and thinking about it. So anyway, there is no further.
I can clarify one. And I'm just going to say, I went back and this has been reporting for our last meeting. I did appear the early portion of the meeting, some people thought was rushed. I don't know if I even offered an opinion, but as the end of the, end of the discussion came up on this subject, it was me to, uh, support generally speaking, wasn't a vote. We should go ahead and proceed and if we come up with a candidate and we decide to vote for the person at this meeting and we could look for more nominees. And I think that people are better really attached and looking at the library operations here. Either read in the paper or stopped in or look at the notes and know and should be aware of the fact that there is an opening. So uh, I'm not so sure if we would not beat the bushes further, we would actually vote with a lot more qualified candidates.
But there is no further discussion. We will proceed to the voting. Uh, hearing none. So our two nominees are Ron Hartman and Karen Campbell. So, uh, we will be voting for, uh, for a nominee. And we will start with the one who was nominated first. That would be Ron Hartman. So all those in favor of Ron Hartman, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And all those in favor of Karen Campbell?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Karen Campbell has three votes and that is the majority. And so she deserves, you know, if she would go ahead and come on up here. Uh, and thank you, Ron. We, we appreciate you being here and being willing. We'll keep you in mind each other from election next year. So, uh, thank you, everyone who participated and okay, so we'll actually have the swearing in of the appointed trustee now. Do you stand or does it?
Yeah. For her and her.
So I guess just thinking that for me.
Okay.
Right there, the highlighted.
Oh, you're actually in camera. I was going to say your hands are cut off in the camera, but now you're fine.
Okay. All right. So, uh, I do solemnly swear or affirm as the case may be, you can pick whichever one of those two.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And the Constitution of the State of Idaho.
And I will faithfully disperse the duties.
In that I will faithfully discharge the duties
of CLN Library Trustee.
Of CLN Library Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
One more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you need a pen?
I was like, probably next one.
I've got one in my. First. Uh, all right. So the next thing is the budget discussion, like. We didn't officially see the last thing.
Do I need to begin?
Yes, please.
Um, so you each have a table packet. There is a memo from me um, as well as some supporting documentation. So we're just gonna start at the top of this. Um, on May 30th, the Board of Trustees was presented with a draft budget with an estimated shortfall of $732,000. The board requested that staff present a balanced budget to the best of their abilities. The following is a summary of the progress made in achieving that balance budget. So the first thing I want to talk about are library operations. So within your packets, um, you have a copy of the proposed new budget. It should be on lilac colored paper. Just so everyone has that handy. And, um, approximately $210,000 was removed from our library operation line items, um, specifically from janitorial, repair and maintenance, legal services, off-site storage and a few other line items. So, um, some of the biggest cuts were from line 80, uh, which was stored slash off-site rental. And, um, we eliminated the options of um, an off-site rental for administrative staff. And that allowed for a savings of $100,000. Um, the next savings is line 74, which is what is being proposed and for legal services is to hopefully work towards agreement that we will have sort of a cap on legal services at $6,000 a month. So, um, we could cut that line by $28,000. Line 73 is for insurance and it was reduced $25,000 because the estimate that we have is just bad. Uh, an estimate is not based on what we know at this time. So I wanted to be, um, generous, but also a little bit concerned.
Which line is that? I'm sorry.
Um, 73.
Question something? Where, where did these numbers even come from? Was that from the quote that Redmond gave that it was so high?
That's, that's something interesting. That's what the
Because that was a mistake. That was, that was, that was a, that was for a whole year, I think. And, um, it also doubled up on what we already had. So.
I believe this was an estimate from, uh, Director Pecols based on concern about having two, um, property claims for our two libraries and other potential claims and steam and forecasting an increase needed. So on the next, um, cut that we were able to like for the salary and benefits line. Um, so we removed approximately $160,000 from that line. Um, sorry, which line was that? I'm sorry, just from in total from line 27. Um, and the way we were able to do that was, um, removing two new librarian positions that had been proposed. And there was a, um, HR manager position that had been proposed. And so instead of her looking at, um, filling sort of those positions with classified staff at a different level. So, um, one of the things that we'll talk about in more detail is potentially just hiring an HR generalist instead of an HR manager to help with a lot of the day-to-day paperwork that we are current, that we deal with.
And how much did you say was saved on that line?
$160,000.
So where is that number? Because I'm, I see the FY 24.
So that's a great question. So I am going off of, there's a budget that was presented on May 30th. Um, and you probably don't have that, it wasn't given to you and you're making it. So I'm going off that compared to this.
I think it.
The HR general, is that a new position? But you're talking about removing two, so I, I lost track. What, how many positions are you removing and are you adding, I guess?
We would, yes, we would want to be adding an HR generalist position.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, but we would not be hiring an HR manager. And then we would not be hiring two librarian positions. Also within line 27, um, we have been working closely with McGrath Human Resources Group, which is the group that did the compensation study in 2022. And, um, this line item, as it stands on this lilac sheet, includes a 4% cost of living adjustment and implementation of longevity pay for staff. And the longevity pay, um, implementation plan was created with McGrath um, Human Resources Group. And, um, their recommendation for 4% cost of living raise is for us to keep from lagging behind in the market. And in the newspaper recently, it did say that Cootney County is considering a 3.5% cost of living raise. They don't know that that will even help cover what expenses people are having in their daily lives. So I feel like the 4% we're asking is in, in line with what the county is asking.
Assistant, thank you.
Um, I didn't get a chance to review the HR manual beforehand, but I sent out a question for myself. Are raises done? Are they merit increases? Is it strictly based upon performance evaluations or is it? Or is it strictly a, I mean, service, we'll call it longevity increase? But what are the, um, pay increases based upon how they manage currently?
So, um, right now, every year during the budget process, staff creates the wage scale that is presented to the board for them to vote. We do not do merit raises, and we do not pay for longevity currently. Um, so what people are typically getting is an agreed upon cost of living adjustment every year.
Thank you.
Which ones? We don't have merit? I thought we had merit raises.
Um, you can call them that if you want to, but we don't.
There.
Oh, so maybe, right, we're not right now.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay, thank you.
So.
Trish Moss.
I, I thought we had a range for each, uh,
We do.
level, minimum, so.
But people are brought in at the entry level.
So they always stay at the entry level because the entry level goes up, cost of living also.
Right, so.
Is there any way to give them merit increase and move them in that bracket?
That's what I want to talk to you all about, the longevity mutation plan.
Because where I'm, where I come from in industry, uh, that's exactly what people are ranked, and the better performers do get moved up, and the poorer performers stay at the lower end. Do better, you actually get moved to the next level. But I really do not like just moving people as a block, so. And I, and I don't know if it's necessary, but anyway, that's, that's also government. But government has, has merit also.
So within your packet also, you should have, um, the wage scale that's in lilac. And this step, I know that's also in lilac. So this document that has the June twenty-seventh draft on the proposed job category structure includes the four percent cost of living. And so in talking with McGrath Group, they recommend applying that to the, across the entire range because we are still at the entry level of the market range for libraries in Idaho. Um, and so that's why it's a COLA and not a merit because we're just still trying to get everyone paid at market rate. Um, so, and just for your history, so in fiscal year twenty-three, McGrath, um, provided a salary scale that we get us to the current market rate. But due to budget constraints, we were not able to meet that recommendation, and we agreed upon a temporary minimum of where to move people. So that's what we did in fiscal year twenty-three. Then in fiscal year twenty-four, we were able to move them to the recommended, um, pay rate for McGrath. And we were able to do a little bit of compression pay so that people who, um, had been here longer can maybe get one percent more than people who were here a long time. And however, as we are right now, um, staff that are hired today are, staff that have worked here four years are likely gonna make the exact same wage that someone is hired as a new hire. So we don't have a way to differentiate people who have worked here a long time. And so what we're trying to achieve next is longevity pay. Um, and so what would happen is McGrath provided us with a, um, step plan. And so they proposed and placed all of our staff accordingly on the step plan based on their years in service at Community Library Network. This does not, um, include years of professional work, but just time with the Community Library Network.
Yes, so like under a step one, step two, step three, is that years? Is each step a?
So that's what we would have to decide upon. So how they implemented it now is for full-time staff, each step is one year of work. For part-time staff, it's two years of. But going forward, the board, depending on our budget situation, they might say, this year we can't do steps at all. Or this year it's a step, but not a cost of living raise. So it's a flexible tool that we can use to determine how to advance, uh, staff pay and recognize them. On this step plan, every step is a two percent increase, which is very modest. Um, some steps at other places can be up to five or six percent per step. So this is two percent per step. So with our implementation plan, you might have someone who's been working here nine years, and they are still on step one. So we would follow the formula that McGrath provided, and then they would be moved appropriately to the next step that matches their years of service. And so that will get us to a place where someone who's been here four years is not making the exact same wage as someone who just started yesterday. I don't know if that makes sense. I trust it really.
It is a lot, for sure. So to be clear, you would have, or in the perfect scenario,
Yes.
you would have, um, COLA?
Yes.
Steps and merit?
No, I mean, I think if we could get to COLA and steps, we would be doing so much better than we ever did.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions about that section?
There's one now. Okay, my steps, we meant longevity.
Moss.
So, so this, I did ask for this McGrath report, and thank you, got it. But I thought there was a, a updated report from, what, I, I mean, where did, where are we getting the update, I thought?
It's through teams meetings with the admin team in McGrath. It's not an actual written report from them. We don't get anyone every year.
So how, how do, how do they determine that the market rate has gone up this much? Do they have their own study that they're just not giving to us? Or are they just saying four percent sounds good?
Yeah, it's all of the factors that, um, go into determining cost of living, and then they look at Idaho specifically, and then they give us their estimate and what they recommend.
Ellen?
Yeah, it's been a year since I looked at McGrath's study, I still have it. Um, was that for survey of libraries or of jobs that required equal skills, knowledge, skills, and abilities for education? Do you remember what that was based upon?
So they based it upon, um, library jobs, um, that are in near our geographic, yeah? But then for a place like our IT staff, our facility staff, they went out of libraries and maybe looked at a county or a city job that's of similar, maybe for similar duties, but it is mostly library.
I follow. Yeah, so was, there was a, was Spokane part of that? Or was it Idaho libraries only?
Washington libraries and Idaho libraries.
So it's not Idaho specific, okay, thank you.
Ms. Robinson? Uh, it somewhat met that answer, I believe. Uh, one of the reasons they went into Washington is to get a similar size of library, um, system. Trish Moss?
So I, I was looking through it some. I was, we're, they're saying they're comparing us to Boise, uh, City of Coeur d'Alene, um, Liberty Lake, Municipal, Spokane, Lake Library. I don't know that we should be being compared to Boise, but I guess that's okay. But I don't see any place in here. It seems like everything is per cents. I don't know how you come up with dollar amounts out of this. I, I'll have to study this, because last year, I think all we were given was just the chart at the back, appendix A.
And you provided us with a wage scale. Is that what you're asking? Like, how do we know what to pay our staff?
Oh, the, these other libraries, the City of Hayden, Spokane, I don't see any dollar amounts of what they're paying. All I see is just these graphs of per cents.
So all of that information would be at McGrath because they are the ones that did the research, and then this was their summary of their findings.
Any further questions on that question?
Um, I do have a little bit more information about the positions that we, that were recommended to be filled or added on the, um, May thirtieth budget versus what we are considering. Um, so it was suggested that we hire the two librarians, and we determined that right now is not the time to do that. It was also suggested that we hire a communications coordinator. And what I would recommend is that we instead hire a communications specialist. Um, right now, in addition to the director duties, the assistant director duties, I am also doing the communications coordinator duties, and it's not sustainable to keep doing that. This position would focus on internal communication, assisting the director with board communication, managing social media and other tasks. And then it was suggested that we hire a human resources manager, and we would rather hire a human resources generalist, and they would help with onboarding, offboarding, benefit enrollment and management, staff relations, and staff recruitment.
Ms. Robinson? So, uh, besides the title, what's the difference of, like, say the HR?
Uh, I mean, an HR manager would be more of an administrative or C-suite kind of position. They'd be paid more, they have more experience. A generalist is someone who does more of like the paperwork and, um, sort of the legwork
Okay.
that needs to be done in human resources.
Perfect, thanks. Trish Moss?
So looking at the May, uh, May thirtieth from Director Ackles, on the top of her second page of summary for salary, she says eliminate communications coordinator, annual salary fifty-three thousand. But I hear you saying you want to replace it or add it?
I would like to switch their position and not make it a coordinator, but make it a communications specialist. Um, and they would be doing, again, more like the legwork of the actual communications, like helping create copy, um, helping create, um, instructions and staff documentation. They would help create an annual report for that. And we don't necessarily need the coordinator level. Um, what we need is someone to actually do that, that work. That's what a specialist would do.
That's a lower salary than the fifty-three thousand.
But full-time, correct.
And, and which? I guess they have a summary here, new HR manager, new facilities specialist one. And then it was eliminating communication. So you want to reduce the HR manager, but you're also talking about adding two librarians?
Not going to add two librarians. That was something that I was talking about previously.
That wasn't on your list.
It was on our internal budget. It might not have made it to.
Ellen?
No, I don't see it in here, but I recall last year there was an attempt to add a, oh, there is a facility specialist. And we didn't do it last year, but that was last year's request meeting for this current fiscal year to replace a person who had already filled that position or left? Or was it an attempt to create a new position?
Yeah, we had a part-time facilities specialist, or, yeah, a part-time. And so that position went away completely, and so it had been discussed of adding the position back and making it forty hours. Um, but in conversations with our facilities manager, as we are right now with two people in that department we communicate work, and we don't need to do that this year.
Maybe he's trying to think of a few things that, okay.
It was very efficient.
Very good, that's good.
Um, Trish Moss?
I don't know what all the staff is doing now when the library is basically closed here. And I guess half of those, but when is this gonna be back online? When are we gonna get the books moved back in and shut down? I mean, I've heard that it's been extended out.
What we're, um, what we have been planning for is December. And right now, more than, I think approximately half of the staff for postballs, um, no longer work for us anymore, um, whether it was through attrition or whatever. So we are operating postballs at a varying level of staff. And some of those staff have been farmed out to fill other vacant positions that we've not hired.
So, so how many people are working for CLN now? I guess I'm, I, I just think it's the same, and we're just reducing two and adding a couple here, but.
Right now, we have about thirteen or fourteen vacancies. And we used to run at about a hundred and three staff. So I'm, I'm approximating that it's like ninety as of right now.
So, when, when would these thirteen or fourteen be added back in? As soon as they could, or are we gonna pick base that when the library opens?
So the ones for postballs, they want to try to wait as long as possible and get those positions filled right before we would open the library. Um, our communications specialist, we need to hire right now. Um, and it would be really lovely to hire an HR generalist right now. Um, and then, but I think kind of where we're at, but I don't wanna promise that one hundred percent.
Is, is the thirteen or fourteen?
Does anyone else have anything to say? Just, let's not all just stand. Okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm just trying to get this answered. Is thirteen to fourteen vacancies we have now, is that reflected in our budget? That you're gonna have a vacant until December half the year?
It is not.
Well.
Is that an eighty percent? And?
Sorry, I don't think it'll be happy, it'll be three, I mean, October, November, December. It's like maybe not even all of December. I think it's up to, at least two months, I would assume.
Well, I was wondering what the percentage is. Is, is it the eighty percent reflected in the?
The eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven? Is that what you're?
That's part of it. Um, just so, like, I wanna make sure I'm painting a clear picture. Um, with, in the next part of this discussion are several options for the board for saving more money. And this budget that you have in front of you, and the salary or the job category structure that you have is what it was yesterday, right? So like, depending on how we move forward, these numbers are all very fluid. And I don't want to present everything in its entirety if we don't even know what path the board is gonna take. So once we know how the board's gonna proceed, we can get a lot more firm numbers and provide more firm data. This is just where we were yesterday and where we think we're gonna possibly go. So I, Idaho, that makes some sense or makes some clarity.
Ms. Robinson? So, oh, is, one of the things you're saying is you need to know if we're going with the, the four percent COLA and the two percent steps so that you can more properly say what the salary budget's gonna be?
And discuss how we're gonna fill the remainder of this.
Trish Moss?
So I, I reviewed this, uh, here yesterday and today from May thirtieth, and my big concerns were, and you addressed one, was why we were spending a hundred and twenty thousand for offsite just to make more meeting facilities or spaces. I think that's terribly expensive to do for more meeting space for the public. Um, but it looks like we've taken that outside, all right? Um, I'm concerned that we still don't know how much material we're gonna have to buy versus what insurance is gonna pay for, because I, I, I thought we were, we threw out so much stuff that got, uh, dirty water on it that we couldn't possibly rebuy all that with insurance. So I, I don't know whether we, we still have a big bill for materials, and I, I would like to get that settled. So I, I don't know whether we, we still have a big bill for materials and I, I would like to get that settled. And then I don't know whether now this is extending into next year, whether the the, the storage and rental is going to go longer. I thought it was going to be done before this budget. But I, I've, I've heard that we're going into twenty twenty five before we reopen the library.
We hope to have it open in December of twenty twenty four, just past the start of the new visiting year. So in the offsite storage, we have it budgeted through January, just in case there are some problems. But we can't vacate that space if the building is still under construction. Does that answer your question? And the question about, do we have a lot more material to buy? I need to investigate that, but it's my understanding that a list of items was sent to ICRIM and that we have within the one million dollars money to buy replacements for those items. So I'm not anticipating a big charge to come, like in November or December as well.
Tracy Allen?
That was my understanding that the cost of restoring this particular facility here was going to be significantly below the million dollar cap. I think it was a insurance company and there was sufficient money left over to repurchase any materials but the collection that were lost. That was, that was always rather clearly related to us, I think, many months ago. So I don't know if the cost of restoration has the estimates it brought up or for still close or what, but we think that the collection would have to suffer somewhat. Personally, the facility back up.
To my knowledge, we're on budget. We're not expecting, we don't have any big things coming down the pipe.
Okay.
All right. So the next part of this is with the two, so with the staff and the operational cuts, um, we still have a budget shortfall of three hundred and seventy six thousand dollars. So I'm just going to do like a little bit of history really quickly. In your table packet, you have a sheet that shows our levy rate for the last ten years. And that's a good document to look at the historical situation. And in fiscal year fourteen, the levy rate per one hundred thousand dollars is forty two dollars and thirty one cents. And in fiscal year twenty three, the levy rate was one hundred, per one hundred thousand dollars was fifteen dollars. Also, on that levy rate sheet, it shows that we've taken an increase. And in fiscal year, do you not have it? I'm not sure.
Is there something on the other side of it? Is it a double sided thing?
Nothing.
Which part of that table?
The one people today with the paper.
You're right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Um, also on this sheet is the percent of increase that we took. So in fiscal year twenty four, twenty two and twenty one, we took a zero percent increase. So, um, because of that, like if we had taken just one percent each of those three years, we would have an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our budget. We could not make this shortfall so big. If we had taken two percent, we would have three hundred thousand. If we'd taken three percent, we'd have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars and we wouldn't have a shortfall. So those are very approximate numbers, but I'm just letting the board know that there's implications long term for not taking any increase. And this is where we are right now with this shortfall.
Okay, and the shortfall of three hundred and seventy six thousand eight hundred and twelve, that's if we do zero percent or?
Correct. Yes, this is all based on zero percent. It's growth and zero percent.
So, so this is just for the board, this is very, I guess confusing, but deceptive. The fact that the levy rate per hundred thousand keeps going down is a reflection of the housing prices going through the roof. So the amount of money, total amount of money is not related to the per hundred thousand dollars. Just think how much your house has gone up in the last ten years. But I, I don't, I don't think that's good information to have there per hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, maybe to phrase it better, it's not good information if you don't understand it. So it's important that you understand what that means because it's accurate information. But yes, if your house went up three hundred thousand dollars and that fifteen dollars and forty cents is, you know, goes up as well, not the amount, but you're paying more of that fifteen dollars and forty cents. So I, I just hope it's fleeting levies and bonds can, you can understand it one day and the next day you're kind of like that. So it is important to understand all this. Tracy Allen?
You know, sort of say, it's just my general understanding that county commissioners and all the different entities submit their budgets. Once those budgets are approved, then it's worked between that total budget, all those different budgets were approved or accumulated and then the, they go by the assessors stuff in order to, the percentage is decided upon or to reach those of the two budgets. So it, it's not strictly because of the house to double in value doesn't mean it's actually going to double. Still, it's still a factor of what the approved budget sort of comes to counting.
Mr. Moss?
So the reason we didn't take the one percent or the increase last year was because we had money left over. So that inferred we took too much money from the taxpayers. So my thinking was you couldn't go take more just because we did it before. And we have too much money right now. We have got more than the two months carried forward at the end of the year. And I still don't, I'm still not comfortable that that extra money is fully explained. I was going to try to study and I kind of didn't get through that. But I, my thinking is if there's too much money more than, a lot more than they carry for, it's one thing to keep it and assign it to Harrison for capital asset stuff or do something, but I don't want to use that to fund our general operations. So that, that's going to be my position is we got to find a way to cut more, either keep the staff lower or find other ways to lower with the book mobile phasing out and different things. So I want to look through that because I believe we should be tight back and, and and not using the extra money to fund that shortfall.
Mr. Allen?
Well, I understand what assistant or the assistant director is saying regarding not taking an increase, let's say in fiscal twenty one and twenty two. I think that's because they were COVID years. But I fully understand the fact, if I got it correct, that we're really looking at compounding in a sense that you can take, if you took three percent that year, the next year you're going to get an extra, if you go for another three percent, three percent on top of that other three percent. And so it's, it's definitely a snowballing. The ability to greatly increase the budget if we took increases each year. The increase for this year will be based upon last year's budget and now and continue. So I think it gives the ability for us to grow our budget greatly if we chose to. And by not taking an increase in those years, we were on the board then, at least I wasn't. We, we have a trickle down effect, so to speak, as years go forward, because we didn't take them down. And we didn't take one last year either. So we're not taking, uh, we're not getting an increase potentially on whatever we increased last year. So I just look at it as kind of compounding as it goes. So if we take a percentage this year or the last year we did, each year it's going to get a ability to have a bigger budget or more money to spend. If I got that correct.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so, um, the next part of your board packet are some proposals that we put together to help us, um, with the three hundred and seventy six thousand dollars shortfall that we still have. Um, I hope our brains can all follow.
What do you, can you show the list of your?
It's part of my, um, yes, there is a
sort of an hour, convert open hours.
Yeah, there's like several documents here, kind of landscapes, I have those ready.
Okay, thank you. And if you don't mind always kind of letting me anyway, know that what paper we're on.
I will do my best. So one of the proposals that has the biggest financial impact is, um, do I mean the hours that were open to the public? I did an analysis of our current hours and then created this proposal. So, um, currently each of our library's hours vary library by library. And we have some libraries that are open five, six or seven days of the week. Some of our smallest libraries are open thirty one or fewer hours. And those hours are spread across six days of the week. And so currently we're open two hundred and ninety two hours and we utilize approximately seventeen hundred and forty six staff hours per week to be open. And so what I did was create a streamlined open hours proposal. And it has a cost savings of approximately two hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So in this proposed plan, um, our smallest libraries would be open four days a week. And our midsize library would be open five days and our largest libraries would be open six days a week. So each of our libraries, um, with the, I think with the exception, no, actually each of our libraries would have some of their hours cut. So it is fair across the board in that sense. The proposed plan would have us open for two hundred and twenty eight hours and we would have fourteen hundred and eighty four staff hours per week. Um, and just from, from my experience in a public library, I have not seen a library system that has libraries that are open so few hours, but so many days of the week. Like I'm used to being open maybe five days a week or four days a week. Like it's just, it's, it creates a very big staff burden when you're open six days a week for maybe five hours per day. And it also creates an additional staff burden because each day they are open, you need about an hour to two hours to open the building and close the building. So you're like losing staff time each day that you're open. Um, each day that we're open, um, we also have to do snow removal. So if you're like open during the day, but less snow removal. There's also possibly less janitorial. So in addition to just saving staff, there are other line items that could be saved. Yes.
When you said it takes an hour or so to open up and close, is that reflected in the, like the, like one through, one o'clock to six o'clock? Do the employees get there at noon and then they open at one?
Yeah, and with, with the, we're not, we're, it is very preliminary looking at this, but would they reduce the hours to give staff enough hours in terms of, I don't know if there's a minimum number of hours they have to, that they have to work at a day, meaning you can't come in and work right now. It usually doesn't work. Usually like a two hour or a window. Was that, is there a way to make that work, these different sites and different hours? Given the minimum number of hours and the staff needs to be present for?
There would be, it would work. It would be fine like that. I mean, obviously when you're, we're looking at cutting, you know, almost three hundred staff hours per week. So that means cutting various positions at each of those libraries, cutting staff. And so we're not going to have people working two hours a week. We're going to have a smaller number of staff, you know, probably working the same or more hours than they currently work. How that would best be utilized. Um, the proposed hours include morning and some after work hours so that people, so that we can do story time for young families and parents at each of our libraries. And then the customers that get home from work and want to come to the library, they still have time to do that. Whereas in our current hours, there are some days that you can't do that because we don't open until one o'clock. So like we don't have story time, you know, options all the time at each of our libraries. As I said earlier, um, we currently have about thirteen or fourteen vacant positions. And so what we would need to do is look and see what those positions are and who the people would be that would be possibly coming out of these library jobs and see if we can fit them into those jobs. So that we're utilizing our existing staff to the best of our ability. But some staff will definitely have to be let go. And so, um, we would need to work with an employment attorney. We would need to make sure we're following um, all of the laws for reductions enforced. And, and this would be a pretty big project to identify those staff that, you know, we would have to let go.
Mr. Moss?
Well, the big libraries, I guess, are Hatton and Post Falls and they have been staying open till eight. What's our traffic between seven and eight right now? Does it already die off?
Yes.
Okay. And the ten opening in the morning is the same. So if it's dying off, and what about Friday? Does it drop off? Then I guess all you're doing is cutting down. Told you it closes at six now, so you're closing at four.
Right. I mean, Fridays could be, you know, a little questionable, but um, we would be open on Saturday for those people who couldn't make it. You know, they could come in. This also gives, like, in some of our smaller libraries, our managers have to sometimes work, you know, all week and then work on Saturday because their staff need to be off. And so this really, I think it helps promote a better work-life balance because, um, they won't have to be scrambling for hours and employees so many days of the week. So it should hopefully be a little less stressful for them as a whole.
Mr. Moss?
So I'm worried about customers. I don't know what other libraries, you know, closing up at Athol or Harrison, you know, how important that is to have more days, but before we went quite so far, maybe a mixture in between the two, it'd be nice to see what was falls staying closed till the end of December, how much that brings back. Because maybe that could be traded off with longer hours for the year, but you know, at some of these libraries.
And going to your point about Athol and Spirit Lake, um, we actually have like restroom, more staff, like we, I upped their staff ratio. And I'm assuming by being those more, people might go to rack. So like I'm accounting for those bumps in traffic at their post.
I would just like to say this is commendable in terms of, I haven't analyzed it, but this is not easy to put together. I understand that. So thank you for taking the time to do that. It's complex. I worked one hour before somewhere else with a supermarket. They're a nightmare. Everything had changed, has some other trickle down effect, whether it's staff hours or who knows what. There's, there's a lot of issues. So thank you for the work that they went, that went into this thing. There is not simple stuff.
You are.
You, not that I need to see it, but do you have data on, uh, what do you call it?
Like traffic and?
Track the door entries versus time of day. So for each of these libraries, can you, or maybe you did that here, you could kind of see this is a low hanging fruit. You can cut, the, this, these two hours off because hardly anybody's doing it anyway. So you got data to base that. That's what I would like to look for. So we're not impacting the, I mean, I don't need to see it, but so we're not impacting the customers or the patrons.
I mean, we will be impacting them like this. I mean, we will be impacting them. Like this is a big change, you know, like both staff and customers are going to be impacted. But we're at a point where I don't know where else do you cut that much money from the budget, you know, like, um, so. I want us to be realistic that our customers are going to be upset and they will have to adjust to these new hours.
Mr. Johnson. So if, if your proposed hours were implemented or if we decided to tweak them and that was implemented. Um, what's the timeframe?
I mean, I would want to ideally start this October one, but you know, I don't know how. But we like an attorney can work with us. I don't know how much legal notice we have to provide. You know, so I would be looking to them for guidance on the time.
Just us.
What about the bookmobile or maybe that's something you've got here? Okay, um. Because maybe there's enough savings on something there that we don't have to do all of, or we can do a mixture of things. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Again, in your board packet, you have something called the library outreach comparison. It has three tables on it. So, um, the first table shows our current structure. It shows the. Three vehicles that we use and the amount of money that we budget for each one each year. And it has the annual staff salaries for those departments. So, um. Approximately right now, we're spending a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars a year on that. Um. I also provided in your board packet, um, the list of vehicles that we have and the mileage and. Year for each of them. So that kind of gives you a little additional information. So we have the three outreach vehicles, which is the discovery bus, the sprinter and the bookmobile. And those are assigned to the outreach department. Um, when, and Director Eccles explained this, but usually when you purchase a new outreach vehicle or any kind of vehicle. You also start cutting away about ten percent of the cost every year to help pay for a replacement. And this library did not do that. So thus we have some of our vehicles at the end of their life. The repairing are expensive and we don't have a fund set aside to replace them, um, and, you know, get more life out of them. So I also, um. Wanted to compare how much outreach we do compared to other libraries. So I used. Um, the annual statistics on the Idaho Commission for Libraries website and. The Meridian Library District and the Nampa Public Library are our two closest libraries compared to our service areas by. And, um, Meridian, they do two hundred and ninety-one policy programs a year. And Nampa does two hundred and forty-three and CLN does six hundred and fourteen. So we're doing more than double the number of programs of similar size libraries or outreach. Um. So what I have proposed is. The first option, um, then the proposed structure number one is just. Clear across the board, completely seizing all outreach, surplusing all three vehicles. And, um, we would hopefully be able to move some of those staff into vacant positions, but there are, some of those staff might, um. Have to be laid off as well. And that would save us the hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And the proposed structure number two. Is that we surplus the two bigger vehicles, the bookmobile and the discovery bus. We keep the sprinter and we keep two staff. Um, one would be doing adult outreach and the other would be doing. And that would save, um, about a hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Just us.
You don't, you don't have in here the fuel cost or you just got maintenance. Is there? I mean, that's a big part of it. Repair, repair and maintenance includes fuel?
Yes, each of those identified.
You know, I'm, I'm curious, um, with. Who, I'm, yeah, two libraries closed for a rather prolonged period. We've been able to keep up within reason, a. Movement of books back and forth. Uh, I'm sure it must have increased because. There are people that want to get a book and they want to come here to get it, go instead of driving. Is, is the, is the frequency, I guess, will be on the sprinter.
So this is a great question. Um, what you're actually talking about is the CIN, the Cooperative Empowerment and Nation Network Courier.
Yeah.
So it's totally separate from these vehicles and we pay a monthly fee that is agreed upon at the beginning of the year to the courier. And so that person is the one who drops off all the items that he requests, but has no part of this discussion here.
Just us.
So if you did, we did option two, where you eliminate bookmobile and discovery bus. What, what services would end? This would be, I mean, we wouldn't have the big bus going into the fairs, I mean, not going into the parades, but, um. You wouldn't have these events where.
We would be going with the bookmobile to some of the more rural locations that we have. And what we would be able to keep doing is, um, using the sprinter to bring books to our, um. Like the local facilities, um, that care for elders and we would be doing what we call lobby stops, which is we. Visit them about once a month and we bring a selection of books for the people in those facilities. And the other thing that we would be able to keep doing is, um, some youth outreach, like potentially. Doing class visits or other big events in our service area, but definitely not as many as we. And, you know, if we went with structure number one, we would definitely need to look into, um. Books, like books by mail or some other way to get books to those people who cannot, um. Come to the library.
And all, yes, I'm sorry, didn't, but didn't you just say the sprinter van, what, are you talking about like home visits or?
Um, we would actually like mail, like the, the books literally get mailed to the individuals through the post office.
Instead of the.
Instead of lobby stops.
Okay, okay. Uh, and then also, uh, just a question, the discovery bus. Would there be any, um, way that it could be just permanently parked somewhere and be utilized? I don't know if that's even.
I mean, first of all, I mean, that's a great idea. Part of the problem is that it has absolutely no insulation. It's like in the winter. The heaters don't work enough to make it comfortable. In the summer, the air conditioning about working up. So you're talking about. Four months of the year that it would be in the.
Okay.
Um, and then you need to have staff time, you know, and then you need to come with that. So. I would prefer that we not do that. I think that would just be a burden for us to have actually.
Just us.
So I, I don't have a real good feel on the bookmobile and discovery bus. What? Kind of places they go to, what would, what, you said rural locations, but can you kind of go through what all?
Sure. Um, primarily would go to schools and. They would go to the Crox Center and things like that. And they would do science and math and engineering activities. And they focus primarily on children. Um, the. Bookmobile had a set of stops that they would go to and it's an actual library that you walk onboard and you can check out. And they would sometimes go up to places by Harrison or Rose Lake. Um. There would be other stops, like I think they tried to do stops in Hauser. So it's places where our library aren't close to them. And this, in this year, we made a pretty big change with both the discovery bus and the bookmobile and, um, most of. I don't know if most is correct, but a lot of our stops were not in our service area. We were serving the customers of Cordillane. And so when we took a hard look at where we were going, um, that dramatically shrinks our footprints.
I see Helen.
No, I'm curious, I think in the, in the history as a whole. Are bookmobiles really a thing these days or is it a kind of a dying out? Thing, you know, almost everybody's got transportation these days for the most part. And I'll couple that with the fact that we, um. Surplus, let's say the discovery bus and the bookmobile, would there be a need, maybe a second sprinter? Just trying to see what, where, you know, I know that keeping. My dodge up buses and generators and your heating units and the air conditioners are expensive. And they're wasting a breakdown. We don't want them to. They suck up a lot of money. And so I'm just curious. Is, is that, is that something you've seen phase out in the library world a little bit or not? I, I, last thing, I was gonna say, and Director Eccles did indicate that she at one point suggested we get rid of those two vehicles as well.
Correct. I mean, the, um. Essentially this year, they've, you know, not been doing much service at all. And, um. In an ideal world, it'd be great to have two or three sprinter vans, you know, one that only does lobby stops at senior centers, one that goes to schools, you know. Um, but to me, that's something that we would achieve in the coming years. It's not something that we could think about doing right now. Um, to answer your original question, um, I think it depends on the library community and if there's a need for. Bookmobiles. I know some of the more, um, financially blessed communities are buying bookmobiles and they're like serving their community that way. Um, but I also know that Cordillane and Liberty Lake, which are two closest libraries, they don't have bookmobiles. They don't have outreach like that. Um, and I think, you know, we have seven libraries in our community and we're able to reach a lot of those areas and. I personally don't know that we need a bookmobile right now.
Just awesome.
Um, I, I like your proposal number two here. Um. I don't know why. Who wants to have some kind of event? Why we need to have a bus go there and park? Why we can't just. Bring the sprinter with some booth setups or whatever and go set up in their gym or wherever they're having. Yeah.
Exciting, right? It's like a mini field trip.
But I.
You can use this.
We could still go do schools. I don't know that the Croc Center needs our help, but, um.
Schools don't.
In, anyway, um.
Uh, no interruptions from the findings, please.
The, going to Rose Lake and doing, and being a library. It, that does seem like we could expand a second sprinter van eventually and still cover that. So anyway, I, I like your proposal number two.
The final proposal is considering our youth services department. Um, right now, our, um. Youth Services Department is managed by our Youth Services Coordinator. Um. Our programs and summer reading for children, it's all coordinated centrally. And then youth services staff are assigned to work at a library or to work centrally helping develop programs. And the annual expense sits at around four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, in this proposed structure, we would actually move and mimic what we do for adult programming. Um, we would have our youth services staff managed by the library managers, not the youth services coordinator. And that's how our adult program, programming staff are managed. And, um. Each library would be assigned one youth services staff and they would be integrated into the rest of the staff at that library. And the proposal would be to take. The youth services coordinator and move them into a library services coordinator where they would oversee both adult and youth services. Um, and the estimated annual. Expense for doing that model would be three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. And that would save us about ninety thousand dollars. Um, and just so you all are, here's a few facts for you. So again, I compare Meridian and Nampa. Um, our library does an amazing amount of programming. Um, it's. We're known for what we do in our programs. And at Meridian Library, they do. One thousand one hundred and ninety-six programs a year. And in Nampa, they do five hundred and seventy-six. And in CLN, we do two thousand one hundred and seventy. So we're doing double or quadruple what our peers are doing. And so I think, you know, it's resetting expectations from staff and from the community. As we would be shrinking this department, but we would still be within library standards. You know, even if we just did half the programs that we do, we would still be doing what Meridian does. So it would be an adjustment, but we would not be falling behind here institution.
Just us.
Why would you need a youth staff at each library? Wouldn't like Athol and Spirit Lake, you'd combine or something or, have you looked at that?
We have our staff work time in these positions, mostly. So they would be, like you'd have one that works twenty-four hours at Athol or twenty-six hours apparently. Um, we have full-time positions at Post Falls and Hayden because that, they're so big, they need them, but our other positions are. And we have tried to share staff like that and it hasn't really worked that well.
Or times, sure. I like that one.
These are very big decisions. It's not something, you know, that was put together lightly. It's. Essentially going to be very painful for staff and the customers. And I, you know, what the board needs to do is to give direction. To me, to admin, to say, okay, move forward in this. And then we would present you with, um, a more up-to-date stat means roster and. Um, budget for next year, you know, but we can't do anything else until we know how you all see.
Okay, so for that last proposal there, um, you said Meridian had how many?
One thousand one hundred and ninety-six.
Yeah, because I wouldn't want to, you know, just cut off youth services.
Right.
We get, you know, free, yeah, we need to get them, you know, adjusted. Individualized going to the library. Really important.
Yes.
So discussion on the proposals. Just having.
No, I just more of a general comment with that is. At some point, we're going to have to revisit our strategic plan down the line, which is a big. Way to navigate where we're going as a whole, to figure out where we want to put our money. That's a big deal. And then we're also going to make a decision on a library director. That person would weigh in on where they want to go, see if part of the creation of it or updating of the strategic plan. So, uh. That's something that's very. Heavy in my mind, where, where are we going strategically? Uh, whether we're building a new building, whether we're renovating one. Those are big decisions and we want to make sure we don't, uh. Find be so, uh, any wise here and down there foolish in long term. And I want to make sure we don't, I don't want to do anything to destroy the libraries. I want them to at least maintain where they are or move and go forward. And the other one is I struggle with the, um, the salary issue. So what I, I like a lean or working, well-compensated staff. And so. It's difficult. it's difficult and it was a lot of work here. Thank you. But there are a lot of proposals, putting all this thing together now to figure out where we want to go and how much we want to hold back once we have a director in the chair. And we can't wait, obviously, for that before we finish our budget. But those are big things in my mind as we're working on this budget. So thanks. And thank you for the work. There's a lot here. I gotta go digest this at home eventually. It's too much to make any decision right now.
And Trust Robinson?
Okay, so to be clear, and I actually love your charts. I always have. But your, your different suggestions or proposals, are they in any of this right now or they're not?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
That's why if you look on your you look on your budget, you'll see that we have on page three, line eighty-nine shows you where we're short. And so that's what we're trying to fix. So none of these fixes are in here now.
And so what are the zeros at the bottom of that same page? Total funds available, less total planned expenditures. So the zeros are if we continue with the shortfall in the line below eighty-nine, that we would only have a limited amount of carry forward to operate the first four months. And that amount of estimated carry forward is not enough.
Okay. I got you. Thank you. Trust Thompson?
Oh, I was also going back up to the revenues, the income. So with zero percent growth, we're figuring the property tax growth is eighty-five thousand. And we've I'm trying to figure out why we don't have as much money coming in estimated. Did we leave off the state replacement? That is added into this year or is that back? All in a hundred percent property taxes? Or in the property tax one A?
That business manager?
The replacement dollars are not budgeted for because the state decides how much of what we are going to levy, they are going to pay. And so the line one A is our existing amount going forward. So if you go with just grow, which we are estimating at only eighty-five thousand, and that does tend to keep dropping with the way the current legislation is written. That is our estimate for growth. You can see line one C in the one percent column, how much that would add and in the two percent column, how much that would add if you were to take an increase.
Trust Thompson?
So I guess my question was last year, we didn't know about the state replacement thing. And property taxes build the people, the county collected less, but the state kicked in the sector amount is is the FY twenty-five one A box, is that with the county collecting the full amount and just the state not doing it or?
That is the full amount being levied, whether property owners pay it or the state pays it.
Good, okay.
Okay, so if we did a one percent increase and a combination of two of these proposals, it would be covered for the shortfall. Would you like to know, Assistant Director, would you like to know about the where we're leaning towards for the proposals first or where we're leaning towards the zero, one percent, two percent first?
I mean, it's really whatever you all feel like you want to share. I also am thinking about trustee Halling and he said he needed time to digest all of this. What I would recommend is potentially adding budget talks to our July regular meeting and not just waiting until they end up the month to have our next budget discussion. So there can be time to work on various aspects, but it's really how the trustees want to move forward. And, and whatever information you're willing to share will be received.
Thompson?
So my thinking again is somewhere or another, we ended up with extra money this year. I don't want to raise, we got extra money and we took too much. And I don't want to raise rates when we already took too much. I'd like to figure out how we got the extra amount. I'd like to use, I don't know if we've really talked about it, but I'd like to use extra amount to start putting money away for the sprinter, another sprinter van, put some money away. I know we talked about Harrison. Anyway, couple, some of the capital projects, and I don't know whether there's more to talk about on that, but I think we still have a basic problem. The reason we're having to look at these cuts, we got a basic problem. We got apparently too large of a salary base that keeps getting, you know, two to four percent increases. And I guess, does that mean we have to raise county taxes or taxes to cover that? That's certainly a possibility, but I don't, I still don't understand where the extra money came from. I'd like to whether it has to do with the libraries being closed some or what.
We briefly touched on this last meeting, but I do think it would be really helpful if trustee class would meet with myself and Janelle and we could just really dive into that. Because if that's the roadblock to understanding why we're short, we want to have a discussion sooner than later. So I don't know if we can make a meeting at the end of the meeting.
You got everything, right?
I was gonna say, I would love to be included in that meeting, but. Trust Thompson?
Okay. If two trustees are there, we'd have to make it a public meeting.
If it's just two?
Two.
Because it's not a majority.
Two is fine. Not an open.
It's technically a meeting, but
it's no different than a committee meeting.
It would need to be noticed. You need to be good. I notice upside and.
I don't know if you have to or not.
We can ask. Ask them.
Trust Robinson?
Well, okay, I have something else to say, but isn't there something where you can like call it like training? Like trustee training and then it's.
I don't know what happened.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. Okay, so I since was said that any information that's helpful. When it comes to the bookmobile and discovery bus being retired. And that has been talked about in the past because of their ages. While keeping the sprinter van and the, oh, I guess just a sprinter van. I'm, I'm fine with, with looking into that or going with structure two for your library outreach comparison. And I certainly right now can't say yea or nay to the hour comparison because, you know, that, that's huge. That's huge. And it is. I, we've talked about this before as well, like last year. That's a lot of hours open, that top chart for sure. So I would be definitely willing to go with some of the proposed hour cuts or close, building closures, but I don't have an exact response to that one, but the these sprinter bus and outreach, that's kind of been or the bookmobile, discovery bus, sorry, that's kind of been coming. So, and I don't know about if it right now would be the time to start putting away money and I don't know exactly how that, how that works for another sprinter van. Say about that.
Yeah, I think I'm leaning towards proposal two as well, because the vehicle issues, we know that they were coming and that they were probably by two. Anyway. Trustee Halling?
We're jumping around different parts of the proposal. So a little hesitant the salary issues. While I'm not a big fan of the cost of living type stuff across the board, I have concerns about changing the process of the instruction when we're certainly can't longevity increases as well. That's a very much governmental way of doing things. Until we have another director in the chair to kind of agree that's where we're going. So I'd be more likely to want to go toward a cost of living increase as a placeholder for now. And dig into this much more deeply as the year goes on with another director. Because that person there may not have a different spin on that. But I am a realistic person. The costs keep going up with utilities and grocery stores and insurance and you name it. So I understand the need for more income. I also am a big proponent of merit increases because I think that people that work harder deserve more. The contributor knows more or less, maybe don't get any increase. I don't think we can get there this year. That's why I thought on it.
Trust Thompson?
I, I also, I want to look at this report. The salary thing, but I, I would be leaning towards not a full four percent. And maybe I'd like to take a look at what would three percent do? If you, I mean, just a simple calculation, if you could provide that, that would help me. And what about maybe there isn't much resale value, but the discovery bus and bookmobile, did we look at the resale value? Does that add much to the picture?
I think like if my memory serves me correct, we would get possibly it was either forty to sixty thousand for both combined.
Probably not highest range.
Yeah. Not an estimate based on their current, like their current conditions.
I only surprise this twenty or twenty-five total. I don't know if they go down a lot.
So, pardon?
Would you all be interested in me doing like another set of open hours? Like maybe there's something in the middle of this that saves like a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Thirty-seven. And, you know, I can do that. I can do like an increase from the proposed hours, like you can increase those hours by twenty-five percent or fifty percent to give you something in the middle. If that would be helpful.
The proposal as it is, but I would also be open. Just depending on, you know, depending what other option you know, he chose in a combination of that. Trust Robinson?
I would love to see that, mostly because of the three days in a row that the majority of the libraries are closed. And that might just be shocking to see, because you did mention that that's somewhat standard for smaller libraries in other systems. But it is, you know, three days in a row closed seems kind of extreme.
Yeah, if we were going to go with that, well, I mean, I guess it would depend on the numbers, you know, what days people came in, but it would be nice to give like if the ones that are closed on Tuesday or against the post. They were open on Tuesday and that way people's consecutive weekends, days off or Sunday, Monday off. When I, anyway, not trust him.
You know, I'm very sensitive to staff issues. That's going to be most personal with them. So, but you have a guest. How many, you said there possibly could be some kind of reduction staffing if we reduce hours. Is it just reducing staff hours or are we looking at possibly having them dismiss a certain number? And if anyone gets on, how many of you that might be, so. And you know, I'm where am I gonna go?
I don't have that solid figure because I didn't want to go too deep into this plan to get that, but it would be actually dismissing that.
These ones.
Yeah.
Assistant Campbell?
I know we discussed this, I think it was trustee class, but and it's not that we don't trust your, your graph here on what days the library would be closed, but is there a way to get a chart of on Monday? This is how many people go to the Apple library. So that we could see ourselves of how the facility is not being used that much that day and that we could verify that, yeah, that would be good to to have Apple closed on Monday.
And I don't want to promise that I can present, but I can do my best. And I also want to make clear that I'm not saying that people don't go to the libraries on these days. People go to the library on Apple, I mean, on Mondays, but we need to pick a day to close so we get consecutive days off for staff. So that they're not getting just one day off a week and then another day off a week. So typically in libraries where there are budget constraints, you see a Tuesday through Saturday schedule that you're still able to serve this customers on the weekends. And then staff get Sunday, Monday off. And so that's what this is modeled after. There will definitely be people who want to go to Apple and any other library on Monday.
Trust Thompson?
What about a hybrid thing, kind of like what we're doing in the lobby here where on some of those days that we're closing these libraries where you've got one or two staff members just at the front desk or at the lobby, just taking orders or handing out books or letting people do their orders and you know, I, I, I don't know how many people are at the light, small libraries on those days. Anyway, maybe you're not putting it saved anything, but.
I mean, I don't think we would save any money that way. In fact, I would probably make staffing and scheduling and hiring the staff even harder. Because you're going to have people fall out sick, you're going to have people on vacation, and that's yet another day that you have to find coverage for. And then how do you constrain customers who think you're open? And then all they get is this tiny little footprint and then they're going to be angry. So I would not be a fan of that plan.
Tracy Halling?
So we just, do we just take this home, digest it for whatever? Two days, whatever, and then pay back another meeting because it's not going to be too much to sit here and make a decision on and so we got a time or a schedule anyway. So we all keep.
Saturday, five minutes.
Okay. I'm not sure how else to make decisions on it, but okay, thank you.
Assistant Halling?
What we need is at some point, we need consensus on how to move forward because I cannot make a plan that meets your needs and your needs and your needs. And then we have all these options. I also believe that if we wait to have our discussion on the July regular meeting, it might not be enough time to turn around the final product before the July budget meeting. So I don't like asking for a special meeting, but I don't know if we maybe need to have one just so we can get some consensus on this. Because right now, there's a lot of ideas, but I don't know exactly where to go. Because right now, there's a lot of ideas, but I don't know exactly where to go.
Okay, I'm leaning towards proposal number one and the second, structure number two of your proposal two.
The proposal number one, yeah, open hours?
Yes. Open hours and outreach. Trustee Boss?
I, I second that, that's what I'm looking at also. But what I was going to say is, we didn't talk about things we did last year, like adult programs, children's programs, collections. How, how did that go? Did we cut so much that, or is, it's hard to say, because we lost the library? Or is there more room to do a little bit more? Or we need to beef it up? Or, or we just haven't talked about it, I guess, is what I think.
In the line items, when we first started the meeting, um, the, I think the children's budget, I cut by $5,000 for children's programming, and then I cut the adult programming budget just a little bit as well. I did not touch the collection budget, because we are already sort of below industry standard in what we spend on our collections, and I would be very hesitant to do that again.
Trustee Robinson?
And in the packet, if other trustees didn't see it, she has the line item reductions itemized. So, that's very good as well.
Trustee Boss?
I, I guess my question is, uh, just where did you reduce it? But things like software or the, now, the line 34, the databases went from 37 up to 55. Why did that go up? And is there any thing we can do to reduce those two items? I don't think we did that last year, but.
And our software line is basically all accounted for. Those are very specific softwares that we need for their running of the library. And so there's really not a lot of room to cut in that line. The database line went up, because we had a database that was, I believe, billed to the collections budget, and it should have been billed to the database budget. And so we put it in there this year, so it's billed correctly.
Trustee Hannah?
Can we go back to the one you said about, I think it was the hours, or whatever it was? So that we have a consensus in the general direction, but I don't know.
Okay, um, so it sounds like trustee class and I were both in agreement in first proposal, open hours comparison.
So, going from the current to the proposed hours?
Yes.
And I have no idea how, what the impact is on the community either, but it's a significant dollar savings there.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I, I think I would definitely be for either the proposed hours, or I don't know how long it would take you to do the modifying proposed hours.
It's doable.
But I think I would definitely be for one of them, on the open hours. Trustee Robinson?
And if I wasn't clear, I, I, I would like to maybe have Tuesday come back. If not at all, the library, the smaller libraries, at least one that's like, like, Spirit Lake is closest to Apple? So like, one of those, you know, so, maybe not both, but one of them. I, and I don't know if a customer from Apple would be willing to go to Spirit Lake. I don't, I don't know. But it just seems like a lot of, it seems a little bit too extreme. So that's why I'm not 100% for what Cher is calling proposal one. If it doesn't, it's only one proposal.
Trustee Boss?
Back on income, line item three, I think it was mentioned, but the sales tax and ag equipment, that dropped a lot. That's, is that just based on historical? Because I, I think we get a percent of the state's sales tax paid for our, in our district or county. The people just aren't buying as much?
Assistant Chair?
Based on this year's current trends, I don't think we're even going to make budget this year. And so I decrease expectations for next year.
Why is it dropping?
Because people aren't buying selections.
Trustee Hannah?
If we're jumping around a place, I would like to further consider getting rid of the two bus bookmobiles on the way. Possibly entertain the idea of adding a sprinter if it's needed. To decrease some of the services that I'm assuming they're used primarily. If, let's say, people from some nursing home, who do their staff there, order books for people, and you bring the books down, is that, is that primarily what it's used for? Is it pick up and delivery for specific book orders from CLN link? I know about the CIN one, but what is, what is this, what is this sprinter's primary function? Just to make sure, and you have.
It's what we call lobby stops. And so that's where we sometimes have very specific holds that a person has requested. But sometimes we also just have a cart full of selection of books. And so the person in that center or that house, they would come and they would get the material from us. And it's about a monthly stop that we make, so they have material, even though they're basically homebound. And, you know, adding a second sprinter, we would then need to also add staff to man that second sprinter. So it's like, not only the sprinter, but it's, we would need two staff, you know, to add into the budget. So it can, it'll, you know, it'll be a significant increase.
Sorry, no, I'm sorry. Is, is there enough to man it? I'm not pushing for a second one, but I was looking at what is the gap of some kind of service by dropping to the larger vehicles? But do we have enough with one sprinter? Because if we do, I wouldn't mind continuously putting money aside if we can to buy a new sprinter eventually. If, if it keeps the cost reasonable, as long as they can deliver on our services. And do we, do we really need a second one? I'm not promoting it, but just entertaining the idea.
I mean, I think, um, right now, we're okay where we are. And I think that would be a decision probably for next year's budget, when the director is clear on the strategic plan and what they really want to focus on serving in the community.
Trustee Hannah?
In that case, if we're trying to go through this, if other people agree, I, I support the idea of retiring the two large vehicles. And then keeping the sprinter van fully serviced and running. And then if we can wait a year and decide we need another one of those. I'd like to have that considered, that if we're looking for the, the big deliverables of some sort, to get an idea where we're going.
Okay, so it sounds like we have at least three people from the library outreach who are willing to go for destruction number two. Okay?
I agree with that.
At least we have at least four. Trustee Robinson?
Okay, so on the CLN vehicle inventory, which, thank you, always wondered, do you have anything to say about that? Like, how many of these are, are used on a regular basis? And how many are about to go to the junkyard?
Can I have a staff member address that, if he's willing?
Yes. The phone off, Randy.
Do you want to copy of that? Thank you.
For the most part, first of all, the Ford car, we bought that really cheap from the state, I believe it was. And it's definitely probably one of the ones that we're going to.
Which, which one?
The Ford Focus.
Oh, wait, that puts.
The Hayden car?
Oh, yeah.
Ford Fusion?
Well, we start from the top.
Yeah, start from the top, please.
So, that pickup truck, that's fine. We just recently bought that, it's in pretty shape, and no issues with that one. Also, with the van that's doing well, we should be able to get several more years out of that. Those are both facility vehicles. And then the Ford Fusion, sorry, it's a Fusion, that one's, you know, on its last legs. We, we bought it last year, I think we bought it for a couple thousand dollars, 1,500. So we definitely got our money. But it would be nice to start putting some money away to replace that. The Hayden van is currently in the shop. Minor repairs, that is definitely on its last legs. Those, some of those vans don't last very long. So, I'd consider funding, putting money away for both of those to be replaced.
What, why, question?
Right, trustee.
Why do we need a Hayden car when the other, there aren't, there isn't a car for the, any of the other?
That's a good question. We probably took out the car and the van.
Okay. Assistant person?
So, the vans are used for, are libraries that do outreach in the community typically. And then the sedan, I would say, is used more for staff that have to travel between libraries. So they have different purposes.
It's not just Hayden.
Correct.
CLN car.
Yes, yes, that's just where it's housed.
Vans, but Hayden, and then Discovery Bus, we would talk, I talked about that, the sprinter. Obviously, you need to put money away for that. Bookmobile will be leaving, and then Post Falls van is in, is in good shape. It's the newest one, and there really are no issues with that one.
Thank you. Trustee Robinson?
So, uh, these are all, besides the two that were actually retiring, necessary? Yes, okay. And so it looks like possibly two need to have money put aside to get new ones.
Trustee Boss?
And this doesn't go into the tariff fund for this, or, you know, whatever? If, because it's not capital? Or where, where would this money be set aside for, for the vans or the vehicles?
Vehicles are capitalized. And so if we set aside money for it, it would go into car.
Would, okay.
Trustee Boss?
Well, that's, my opinion is that some of the extra money we have now, if it really is extra, it should go to refilling the carf and taking care of some of these future plans. But the vehicles and, uh, Harrison, I don't know whether, are there any other things that we knew of? I mean, we did the roof at Hayden, but is there other capital projects?
And one thing that we need to be considered is the HVAC replacement air. And also, I believe that post falls.
If post falls, it would be two more years out.
Say something? Okay, so, the open hours comparison, we've had consensus to either do the proposed hours or modified. Okay, so Robinson, yes, and yes, it's free minimum. Okay, all right. Yeah, number one and number two. And I promised that there would be at least two hours for budget, so we can go to 442. Then I, I think we do, I, I don't think we have an executive session. I think we will have a, a tight one. Anyway, so, then you go 442 again. And, trustee Boss?
And, and then I would like a revised budget estimate with 3% cola, just to see what does 1% buy us?
Then we can, $50,000.
We know that?
I thought every percentage up is $50,000.
No, that's, that's for the property tax.
He's talking about staff.
Salary. A number of people.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have? I don't know, I need to cut that back, because prices are going up for everyone and want to pay them well. So, I'm not sure.
It's, it's just to see what 1% does.
Yeah. Trustee Robinson?
Would it, would it be better just to either go with the 4% cola and the 2% steps? Or just the 4% cola, or just the 2% steps? I don't know if we necessarily need to see every percentage of, you know, the little difference between the percentage. I don't know.
Assistant Director?
Um, the cost to get every step member on the step plan and to put them in their appropriate plan based on their years of service with CLN is $154,000. To me, that is not that much money to achieve something that should have been done many years ago. So, what I would probably say is, it would be better to do like a 2% or 3% cola and the steps versus no steps at all. And because, again, we have people who are, have been here for four years who are making exactly what someone has been making the name of their day. And that does not do good for employees' power.
Trustee Robinson?
Wasn't that addressed last year with the compression? It wasn't? Didn't we try to get that? Uh, we did like a micro baby style. Oh, okay.
Trustee Hannah?
What, what percentage is, is already reflected in here, or is it for salaries? And what, what?
What did you do on?
I'm going back to the worksheet I guess I called for fiscal 20 by.
Is it this one with the?
Oh, no, I didn't.
No, I'm 20, I'm, all right.
What about the one from the board packet, the table packet? That's what I'm going off of.
Questions? Sorry, what was your question?
I was just trying to, so what, what is the cost for 1% or 2% or 3% cost of living, or increase?
I can't say that off the top of my head.
Okay. And?
Trustee Boss?
So, so what is line 21 under FY '25? Didn't, I thought that had the 4% in it.
It does, yeah.
So, the reason it's not that much different from last year's is because we have fewer people working?
And it has longevity in it already.
Line 21 is 4% longevity, meaning steps? So it's got the 154,000 in it.
And the way, the reason it is this way is because we have shifted some positions, you know? And so that's why you're not seeing such a massive increase.
Okay, that's, that's, trustee, that's really good to know. I think that was asked earlier as well, but it didn't come through. That is including the 4% and steps for all employees.
Thank you. Trustee Boss?
And, and is that with the suggestions that you were having at the beginning of?
Yes.
What was it? Where we're, where we're adding a couple people and, you know, okay.
Trustee Robinson?
Since the assistant character is looking for more clear direction. Clear direction. Should we talk about, are we at this point willing to take a percentage? One percent, two percent, I see three percent is not even on here. Um, we should at least have that discussion if that's, if people are open to that. And considering the other chart. It was in our table packet about it, what happens if you don't take it year after year? The, uh. Effect. So maybe we could, uh, have that conversation.
Sounds like a good idea. Um, I am willing to consider a one percent if it's necessary. Um, plus everything going up and. Physical size of the buildings. I'm really trying to be accommodated for.
I agree.
Thank you.
Ms. Boss?
Um, I could, I could do as much as one percent, but I'm really. Not on board with that yet until I understand what we're going to meet about why we have extra money. So.
Ms. Robinson?
And I guess we should remember that we can take one point five percent as well. So we're not restricted to one or two, uh, because there is a big difference in the, the bottom line numbers there of what's, uh, missing. Each, each percentage that you all take is approximately fifty thousand dollars. So, uh. Yeah, so don't rule out one point five or six.
Uh, as you can, I'm in agreement also with the one percent based and possibly maybe five.
Not that much, yeah. I like one point five at this point, just because the, uh. The, the numbers here that. It's, uh, three hundred and twenty five thousand, seven hundred with the one percent. Uh, is missing and two hundred, two hundred and seventy five thousand, two hundred. With the two percent. So I, I would, I would be a thousand point five.
I'm probably good in that range. I mean, again, with a little understanding, but I would say. Just my gut feeling is I don't want to go for one and a half percent. One percent sounds feasible, but costs are going up. But we also aren't getting a. Growth increase as well. So. That, that is there. Eighty five thousand dollar increase in the budget automatically just from counting growth. So. Um, I don't want to go crazy on it, but one, one and a half percent sounds feasible if we determine it's necessary for all the things that are involved here.
Okay, Mrs. Spencer?
If I could just add some historical context to the growth number. Before the legislature changed it, our growth factor was almost a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And this is how much that legislation has changed our growth. The faster you grow, the less you get. That's how they changed it. And it's been reflective in our decreased growth after that change.
Unfortunately, because growth should pay for growth, but it stayed character tailing it.
Ms. Boss?
I guess I don't understand that because growth is. Determined by the assessor and what the, what the, uh, tax base is. And so what was?
The calculation that the legislature put into law. Has changed how that is calculated and the amount that we are allowed to take. Yeah, um, the assessor talks about how much we have grown and this is the new values, but the, the law has changed how much we can take of that.
And so, um, yes, make it there, I guess, uh, one point five would be my, my max. One or less, but see.
Ms. Allen?
So that means that we changed the, um. Work season to show zero, one and one and a half percent instead of two.
With that being said?
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Boss?
So let's be clear, I'm still at zero until I understand what this is. And I don't want to go more.
Okay?
And, uh, what, what line did legal, uh, all entered?
Not just the database.
Okay. At this. Something happened.
Seventeen or seventeen five.
Oh, you've got that number stuck in my head. Weird.
Ms. Boss?
And is, is there any? Implications that might happen because of insurance not paying the full amount or? Cost overruns on the work here or? Or, or is there something more that might hit our budget?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Ms. Robinson?
I was going to ask this at last meeting, but I got there late. It was on the, the CIN. Or no, it actually was on our, our financial. But why did our payment to CIN go up?
Um, CIN has, um. Chose to invest in a new online public catalog. So like when you log into search for books. We have gone with an upgraded version that they're going to be working on. I think it's due to launch, um, in October. And it's just more modern. It's easier to search. It's just a much better one. So that's why.
So is that like a temporary? I mean, it's like a, it's this year for next year, but not permanent?
It was just this year, right? Because there was a discussion that split over three years and everyone agreed to just do it at the moment. Ms. Robinson?
Is there enough to work with right now for, um, everything to be, um, ready for the next? Yeah, meeting. And I don't know if anybody has anything else, but. If there's enough, if, if everybody's done and there's enough to go on.
All right, if there is nothing else on this side, we could move on to the next thing, which is. Right, so going into executive, would entertain a motion to go into executive session. And please, I think it helps folks in Florida to have big fun, aim. Ms. Allen?
And who did we go into executive session? Pursuant to Idaho code seventy four dash two zero six one A.
It has been moved to go into executive session, pursuant to Idaho code seventy four dash two zero six one A. Roll call votes, Robinson. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Boss?
No.
Uh, Shannon, for us. Addison, for that, yeah.
You, I'm.
Okay, it is unanimous. We are going into executive session pursuant to Idaho code seventy four two oh six one A.
I move that we extend the meeting to five ten.
It has been moved to extend the meeting to five ten. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. We. Five ten. All right, uh, so we're out of executive session and. Yeah, executive session, that's five oh three. And now has the action item. Six. You guys write that down or you don't want me to?
Write what down?
Motion that we discussed.
Oh. I don't, yeah, we, I didn't write it down.
Okay, uh, so then I would entertain a motion, and you guys can just say. You want, uh, to appoint Lindsey Miller, Esther Fuller as interim director. As starting July eighth until November eighth, or until a permanent director starts comma, whichever comes first.
So.
Okay, it has been moved to appoint Lindsey Miller, Esther Fuller as interim director, starting July eighth until November eighth, or until a permanent director starts, whichever comes first. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is unanimous. And Ms. Miller is now our interim director. Uh, well, we can call her interim director now, but. She officially starts July eighth until November eighth, uh, or until a permanent director starts, whichever.
Being director until, till by eight. And then she's the interim director.
Um, yeah, we, we can call her interim director. I think she would prefer that.
Hmm.
So, all right, uh, no special or regular meeting dates to propose.
Is that action, is that? Agenda items that I, that my?
Uh, oh, so we're on to number seven, so it's special.
Does that mean agenda items for, for me?
Uh, no, it's not.
Not doing that.
Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. You said it?
I was gonna say, you can, your first motion.
All right, you can say so moved.
Okay, so moved.
All right, so I have a senior first, uh, yeah, question. So it has been moved to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye, so maybe we are officially adjourned. Thank you.